Stand for the pledge.
To the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, on our ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. We have a motion for approval of the agenda. Second. On your favor? Close motion carries. A approval of the minutes for the organizational meeting held on April 18, 2023 at 6:00 PM in this room. Entertaining a motion for approval of those minutes.
I surrender.
On your favor? The regular session held April 18, 2023 at 6:08 PM in this room. Entertaining a motion for approval of those minutes. Second. On your favor? Close motion carries. The executive session held April 18, 2023 at 7:38 PM in this conference room. Entertaining a motion for approval of those.
Second.
Sorry.
On your favor? Close motion carries. Other station for payment of bills.
Okay, so real quick. When you look at a couple things, well, first off, when you look at the financial comparison, things are going to be a little bit misleading. So if you look at the ledger, we have roughly $1.5 million more in revenues than what shows here. We received our funding for the four electric buses, so I'm trying to keep it separate so you can compare apples to apples here. And then the buses won't be here till August, but what we're going to do in June, at the end of the June, is cut the check for the buses so that it comes out of the same school year. Then when we get our buses, we'll pay those back. So it's going to be money in, money out because the buses were free. But as we move into this construction phase, that's also going to impact this financial report. So I will do my best to separate out the construction parts so you can still compare year to year on operations. So, for example, we're going to be spending some money with the brick tuck pointing. That's coming out of Fund IV. That's not a normal budgeted thing. When we sell the bond issues, we'll see all this revenue coming in, the 2.25 million from the bond issues. So I will separate that out, but on the ledger it'll show that. But then pay attention to this financial comparison because it's going to show you more of a comparison from year to year. Second thing is the tuck pointing is moving right along. If you get a chance, you just kind of pay attention to the detail, which has been extremely impressive. Anything from the caulk and the joints, where they caulked it, used to be white, dirty white. Now it's, it kind of matches the color of the grout and they even throw sand in the caulk to make it look like grout. Wheat holes, and Matt will talk a little bit more about it. But they're 75% complete, and I didn't get this bill put in on the bills. So when you do the bills, this $173,913.75 is not on there, but Lacy's going to be sending them out a check. So as you approve the bills, you're approving this as well. Thank you.
Any questions? Not entertaining a motion for approval of the payment of bills.
I surrender.
Second.
On your favor? Citizens Communications. Thank you for your donation. Your generous donation helped us provide a safe drug and alcohol-free environment for the kids. We were able to provide food refreshments, games, and prizes for all that attended after prom this year. Thank you again for helping us make the 2023 after-prom a success. Move on to administration report, elementary.
Okay, so we've been busy, really, really busy. We had a great spring program art show book fair that was in the first week of May. We've also wrapped up Farm Bureau Safety Day Field Day, and we've had great weather, you know, really to have those things. Farm Bureau Safety Day, we did have to cut that a little bit short as we got rain right around lunchtime. But we got to see the majority of things. The kids really enjoyed all of that today. We had our PTO carnival, and that was for pre-K through 5th grade. So even our half-day pre-K kids got to enjoy the bounce houses. And so that was great, and we thank PTO for that because we had a lot of fun. We had yard game, dump tanks, bounce houses, tattoos. You probably see some kids with them everywhere. Mine came home with them all over her face. And they had, Opa brought out caramel apple nachos for the kids to enjoy, and so we just had a variety of things. Kindergarten graduation is coming up this week, so kindergarten graduation is Thursday at 1:00 if you'd like to attend. It's still the theme of the red carpet, so they're going to showcase what they want to be when they grow up. And so that's, it's really exciting. So afterwards, we have a cookies and punch or cookies and water afterwards and picture opportunities for everyone. Our last day of school is Friday. We have end-of-year awards at 9:00 AM, and then we dismiss at 1:10. So our kids are super busy. Everybody's ready for, for summer, though. Summer school starts for us on June 2nd. We currently have 130 students enrolled in summer school. So that is by far the biggest group that I've ever been a part of, either teaching or putting together. So it's exciting. At the same time, we're kind of like, wow, what are we going, you know, how are we going to, how are we going to do this? Some of our biggest classes, Ms. Kason's got 19 kids, but she's used to that because she's got 21 this year. So she's, she's used to that. So we're super excited. We're ready for, you know, this new journey to start, so.
All right, 6:12. On April 26, we had the art showcase. I don't know if you were able to attend that, but it was a great event, kind of spearheaded by Tony Lucas, Kelly Hutchiman, Rich Green, and Brandy Wright. If you've been years past and used half the gym, and they've had different projects in the choir that they sang with Lisa Blake. And it's been a great event. They've outgrown that area. We had to buy new standards for them to put their art pieces on. So it's, we're seeing growth, which is obviously what we want to see in all those, in the arts and industrial tech. So it was a great event, and thank Tony for leading that. We're finished with MAP testing, EOC, EOC testing and makeups, which is, it's great. Initial getting that done is, is getting the schedule done and testing everyone's fine, but getting the makeups sometimes is a headache. And Mrs. Benoy and I were tired of getting those caught up, so we are complete with those. FFA banquet, we have that on Monday. Last Monday was another, one of my favorite events all year because it's led by students and they get the speeches and lead the, lead pretty much the entire show. So it's, it was another wonderful event led by Ms. Dubrinsky. And then obviously, we are getting into our senior events. We had senior awards, and I think that was fun to celebrate them one more time. This week, busy week, obviously, just like the elementary, seniors' last days tomorrow. So they're going through their last checkout sheets and making sure they have everything turned in or ready to roll there. We do have 8th grade promotion Thursday night at 6:00, so you're all invited to come to that and help lead that celebration of those students. Then Thursday as well, we do have graduation practice for the seniors and pictures, so I think Shelby will discuss that. And if anybody's interested in taking a picture with a senior that you might want to, that we'll take a picture around 11 or so, depending on how long graduation practice lasts. And then graduation is at 2:00 on Sunday. We will take pictures in here at around 1:30. We'll have our pictures, we'll get your flowers on you, and then be ready to roll. So it'll be a fun day to celebrate the class of 2023 one more time. And then sports-wise, activities, we do have state track coming up, so we have a lot of individuals who have qualified. On the female side, Cassidy Goodwin and Jen Hinkle both qualified. On the boy's side, Austin Jansen, Keaton Strange, Colin Hayes, Elias Hewnall, Cooper Clare, Grayson Miller, and John Clark are all competing, state track. It will be held on Friday and Saturday, depending on how they do and what field event they're doing, it varies. But great to have a good group going down there, and they'll leave early Friday morning to get to compete and represent our school. And then on baseball, obviously had a successful season. Actually, all-conference had, just recently came out. Robert Dooley was a Lewis and Clark Player of the Year or Co-Player of the Year. He split it this year, but a great celebration, or great award for him. First team, Ryland Roberts. Second team was Brex McCarren. Third team, Blake Parrish. They are playing in the district championship tomorrow night at 6:00, Skyler County, so big game for them. They've been there the last couple of years, so it'll be good to have that experience behind them. I also have Lisa Blake here to talk about all happiness, inquire, and band.
Yes. Okay, so we've also been very busy.
Yep.
So drama this year, put on two little productions. We did a play called "The 10 Best and Worst Things About Middle School", and "Everything You Always Wanted to Know About Your Teachers But Were Afraid to Ask". So those both went over really well. Music appreciation, I think we're finishing off with three started students that are going to earn college credit for that class, so that's been awesome. For band, our new uniforms finally came in. They came in after marching season. They came in late November, early December. We did have to order a few more this year because we didn't have enough, so that's a good problem to have. And four of our students that made all-conference band this year got to debut those in February at that event, so the whole group will get to finally put those on display this fall, so that'll be awesome. For marching season, we took second place at Clark County Parade of Champions out of all the 2A schools. There were six there, and we got second. Next year, we're going to be transitioning into new drum majors since Zoe's graduating, so Angel Wolf Perez and Agnes Reel are going to tag team that, so that'll be really fun. Our all-conference band members were John Clark, Agnes Reel, Kayenna Ogden, and Zainrak. And then we also had an all-district kid this year, which is the first time in quite a while. There's only been a handful. Elijah Reel made it this year. And then for middle school band, they've also been very busy. We had four students that were selected into the Junior High School District Band. We had 21 students take solos to the North Shelby Middle School Music Festival, which is kind of like solo and ensemble, but they get to go, and instead of just playing their solo and getting a rating and being done, they actually get to work for about five, 10 minutes with another band director. So they actually get verbal feedback, too, so it's kind of like a masterclass. So Brad Hudson, who's Kirksville's band director, he was their judge this year, so they got to work with him, which was awesome. But of the 21 students that took solos to that, nobody earned a bronze rating. We had four silvers and 17 golds. Of the gold ratings, they reserved six overall platinum awards for the whole day out of all seven schools, out of all the students, and we brought home four of them. So they had to go snatch one of them from another judge's room. They also, the large group middle school, so 7th and 8th grade, also went as a large ensemble and got to perform, and they also earned a gold rating. And I'm actually taking them to World of Fun this Saturday. They're going to compete in their Festival of Music and get to clinic with a college-level judge and also get a rating like they would at state contest. I brought 5th graders up on Monday to do the big recruitment spiel for band. I'm finishing that up on Thursday, so I brought them up, hyped up band, tested. They take like a listening test so I can figure out what they can and can't be paired with. And then they write down their top three choices, and they tell me their different like facial features. So like if you've got a kid with big lips and a really good ear, maybe low brasses for them, stuff like that. So out of that entire grade, only one kid was a definite no, so we should be starting somewhere between 20 and 25 this fall, which would be awesome. Retention-wise, for band, the only student I'm losing between now and this fall is my one senior. So as of right now, I'm not losing any students, and we're getting five. Choir, I'm only losing one student to a scheduling conflict, and then we're graduating two seniors, so next year's looking really good for that, too. The high school choir, also very busy this year. We had seven students make all-district, and we had more students make that ensemble than even some of the 3 and 4A schools. We always ride the line between 1A and 2A. I think it's like 100 kids and under for 9th through 11th grade, and we're at like 105, so we always kind of ride that line. So we had seven make-all district. We had 12 all-conference students in November. We hosted that event. We had an all-state choir kid this year. Agnes Reel made all-state. And there have only been six students in the entire school history to make all-state. Of the six, three of them belong to the Clark-Reel family, which is fun, and I'm also on that roster. Choir also got selected to perform the National Anthem at the state wrestling finals at Mizzou in February. It was like nothing I've ever seen in my entire life. It was awesome. There was so much going on. We also ran into a superintendent after we sang the first time. He goes like, "Oh, Knox County, my first teaching job was at Knox County in the 80s. Tell Keith Goodhouse I said hello." So it's a very small world. And then I took them to large group contest in March. That rating system, there's five ratings. You want to get, it's basically a 1 to a 5, and a 1 is a top rating. It's on a point system now. And we were one point from top rating, which was awesome. We got a, we got top rating in performance this year, and the judges had really good feedback to give, really positive and also really constructive. The way that contest works for that setting, as you go, you sing two pieces that are prepared in front of three judges, and then they average their rating. And then you go into a room upstairs and you sight-read a piece. They basically hand it out. You have two minutes to look at it, and then you have to sing it for a judge, and you get rated on that. You get to go back, explain kind of what you missed, sing it again, and then you get rated on that. So it's a little stressful, but they, they did awesome. Let's see. And then I took 12 entries to district solo and ensemble, and of those 12 entries, we had three satisfactory ratings, which was that middle rating. Five outstanding ratings, which is like a 2, and then four exemplary, which were state-bound. And then the only, I think the only 1, 2, or 3A school that had more state entries than us were Skyler County Macon and Clark County. So they represented very well this year. And I just want to thank you guys for your continued support, especially on the admin end. We've got a couple alumni, you know, now that I've been here for a few years. We've got a couple of our alumni at Culver-Stockton right now. Arista Snyder, she was the drum major my first year here, and she just graduated. And she was their drum major at Culver for two years, so she got to do collegiate-level marching band. And Connor Melendez is finishing up his first year there. He got a music scholarship because of that beautiful sousaphone you guys let us buy. And I also found out after school started from the choir director there that when he did his choir audition, he earned a perfect score in the sight-reading. So he was the top scorer in that, so lots of good things going on. And I'm ready for a break, but also like looking at all the things for next year, too. It's like, let's, let's just keep doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. The big thing, we are finishing up the COP School Violent Prevention Program grant. It is due tomorrow. It will be submitted tomorrow. Don't like taking it down to the wire, but sometimes you just have to. So this will help us if we are awarded to supplement some of the safety things and building improvements that are in the bond issue to help make those even better. And then I thought I was about done with grants, but got another one today that I'm looking at. Compliments of Mr. Turgeon to help with the playground, or resurfacing. We had some individuals here that met with Mrs. Benoy on the playground and what that expansion would look like, and some grant funding to help with that. So we'll be pursuing those and getting those submitted. And then finally, special ed. We're working on transitioning to an online program for our IEP's evaluation report. So there'll be some training for our teachers over the summer, but this will help keep it better stored and not make me worry that we're going to lose everything with one fail click. So this will be much better, so. But we're gearing up for the end of the year and very busy.
All right. You guys remember Matt? For those of you teachers, you're going to see this gentleman around the school. He works with Navigate. That's the company that's working with us on our, all our building projects. So he'll be around quite a bit. It's kind of an extension of our staff here, so. We had a busy day today, but I'll let you kind of update the board on kind of.
Yeah, so as Andy said, we had a busy day. I told him, next time we had a board meeting, I'd try to add maybe one or two more meetings on.
Thanks.
Extend the date. No, it was a little, we had definitely a more than busy day just because we were trying to fit in a few other meetings before the end of school. So just a quick update on tuck pointing. I did want to start out by just saying I did reach out to Chase Dixon. Had a good conversation with him. He was appreciative of us, you know, calling him after the fact. Just wanted to kind of go through, you know, some of the learning curves of trying to go after, you know, you know, state-funded projects. So he was appreciative of that. He understood kind of where we were at with the project. But then as far as stat goes, as Andy mentioned, they're making a lot of progress. I think their majority of the waterproofing is complete on the brick. They still have some caulking to do. You'll see some of the, some of the windows are still missing some caulk, and some of the pavement has some caulk removed. They're, they're actually going to take care of re-masonry veneering the monument signs. So the one up front here, they're going to take care of that with some split-face block, and I think it'll really make that, that pop and actually repaint the lettering as well. But they said they would take care of that. We're going to try to, their, their schedule probably has them out to the end of this, this month, so another two, three weeks, and then they'll pretty much be wrapped up. This Friday, they're going to walk and look at the plaster repair work on the inside of the windows. So we're hoping that they can just roll right into doing all the plaster repair work over the summer so that, you know, over the summer, we get all that done, and, you know, start of school, we'll have, you know, kind of a Kleenex year and all the plaster repairs on the inside of the, the high school will be taken care of. So busy, busy with that. As Andy said, they are moving fast and been really impressive with just the kind of above and beyond attitude that those guys have. They're hard workers, and they really go to the nth degree to, you know, make it a, a good job. And that's kind of why we, you know, have had good success with them, and they, they really take pride in their work, so. Moving on to the next meeting we had with Bond Architects, so we have Bond, you know, onboard. We are going to wrap up trying to get their contract finalized, so probably by next board meeting, I would say we'd have a contract finalized, but that, that hasn't prevented them from starting on some of the design. We met with them for two and a half hours today. So we had some meetings with some of the staff to look, you know, start talking about secure vestibule entrances and the new administration offices that are going to be shifting around. So had some good feedback. They're going to send out some surveys to the staff, try to get, you know, feedback from the staff. And really just, you know, kind of starting that process. So we have a schedule that we're going to line out over the next several months to finalize the design, and then it'll be, you know, come, say, October is when we'll go out to bid for that work. So a lot of, a lot of exciting stuff with that. We also met with Remini Kesha, the cafeteria.
Kesha.
Kesha, yeah. We, we met with her to go over some of that, you know, kitchen enclosure stuff. So we had some good, good feedback there. And then the last meeting we had this afternoon was with the playground equipment vendor. That is Play and Park, and they have, so we're going to, we're going to try to assemble some equipment that we think, you know, are, are, you know, priorities. And then they're going to put a design together along with, you know, some, some budget numbers and get that back to us so we can start moving forward with that project later this summer, so. A lot of good stuff out of today. I don't know if I got everything.
I think, yeah, I think that was really good. Couple things, like Mrs. Goodwin mentioned the, the grant for the playground. There's another grant that we applied for, and that's how we come about with Park and Play. We're trying to get more information of it, but it almost sounds like if we buy $100,000 worth of equipment, they'll match it. If we buy less than $100,000, then it's prorated like a 60/40 match. So, so we're trying to get that information, and then found out about DNR doing a 40% grant on the surface. So that pouring, that rubber surface, trying to stretch every dollar. So I'm doing the same thing. I'm working with DNR on doing an energy audit to figure out what our savings would be per month. And then DNR offers this low-rate loan. So what you can do is you can stretch your dollars. So say, they say you're going to save $25,000 a year on your electric bill. Then over the next two, next 10 years, that $25,000 you use to pay back that loan, but in the meantime, you're able to add $250,000 to your projects. So we're just looking at every possible avenue of what we can do to stretch those dollars because I know our list of projects was extremely long on all of these projects, so we're doing what we can to make the most, get the most money out of it. Like today, the playground people says, "Well, how much money do you have to spend on the playground?" I said, "No, you tell me how much the playground costs, and we'll tell you."
There's prices in that book.
Yeah, I don't see any prices here, so give me some prices. So a couple other things. Just staff banquet. We're going to have a staff banquet next Thursday. If you can make it, it's going to be at 6:00. We're pretty excited about this. It used to be that we recognized staff at Rotary and gave pens out, but it's more of a Rotary event to recognize students. So we're going to have the Rotary banquet on Tuesday. If you can make it out there, that's great. And then Thursday's our staff banquet. It's going to be catered by Bobby Race, so you know, it's going to be good food. And thankfully, a lot of our vendors have donated some really nice prizes for our employees, so we'll have some drawings. I think right now we're looking at close to 150 because they're allowed to bring a plus one. So it's going to be a big event, and if you can make it, we'd appreciate it. We'd love to have you part of that. So that's on Thursday next week, so. And then I was also going to mention, I asked for, it's been a year now for bids on air conditioning, the bus barn. Finally got one about a month, not quite a month ago, three, three weeks ago. Originally, I was told it'd be around $7,000, while the bid came in was a little over $13,000. I was like, "What happened?" Well, then they added a whole bunch to it, like to air-condition the break room and all that. And I was like, "We're not, we don't even have the break room built." Just, we need, this summer, it needs to be cooled off so he can work on these buses and not die of a heat stroke. Well, in the meantime, I had someone else reach out and offer to give us a bid, and so I asked, I asked them to redo their bid to just be the, and I never heard back, so we accepted the bid. And they're out of, they're out of, not Wayland, they're out of. Maywood, yeah. They're out of Maywood. I can't think of the guy's name to save my life. But anyways, the bid was $8,900. Blake Chancellor. So anyways, they said he was going to order the equipment as soon as he gets it in and take about two weeks. And his plan included ductwork with registers, whereas the other one, it was just a four-ton unit and just a big vent blowing out and one pulling back in. This one here is a five-ton unit with a register and vents coming, 10 vents coming out. So it seems to me like it could be more efficient, and it's unfortunate, but, you know, it's going to be hot here pretty soon, and I went over there and helped them last year, and it was, it's hot. So looking forward to getting that done. That's all I have for my report. Sorry it took so long.
Okay, we're on to food service report.
It's attached. There's not a whole lot on there. They're finishing up the year, and just like, just like anybody else, they're really busy, too, you know, when you have field trips, they prepare the meals for the field trips. So everything's kind of off-wack, and they did hamburgers and hot dogs the other day for their end-of-year barbecue. So there's just a lot going on. They're looking forward to the summer, looking forward to the break, but also already thinking about what's it going to be like to work in a kitchen that has a bright-sized walk-in cooler and freezer in a nice area, so they're pretty excited about that, and they were pretty excited when they met with us today. So hopefully, all, all those ideas, you know, just pan out just exactly the way they want it.
We want the unfinished business. There's no items. New business. There be dog, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening. So, you know, when I got my master's in counseling degree a few years ago, you know, one of the things you always have to do is identify like professional goals for yourself, you know, why are you doing this? And so of course, always the first thing I wrote down or would, you know, say is, I want to be an elementary school counselor at my home, at my home, at my home. And that came true for me this year, so I'm very thankful for that. I have loved this job. But another professional goal I always identified for myself was to someday utilize the services of a certified therapy dog. And so that's why I'm here tonight to talk to you because this past fall, I went to the school counseling conference at the Lake of the Ozarks. And there were lots of school counselors there with their therapy dogs, you know, because they were there right along with them, doing, going to all the sessions, doing everything. And I am an animal lover. I love pets and so I loved being able to interact with the dogs. But then I also attended a session of a school counselor that had her dog there and kind of talked to us about, if you want to do this, what steps do you take? And so I have a, a little video that I would love to show you guys if I can, is it okay if I?
Airplay?
Uh huh. Do you have to get off or anything for me to?
No, just, just go to board new and.
Okay. So this lady, her name is Tina Russell and she actually worked for the Reed Springs School District at one time, but she's now at NIXA. And so her dog is Orbit. And so I want to just share this little video for you guys of how this kind of all came to fruition for them and her and kind of the benefits that they've seen from it. Did you say boardroom new?
Yes.
Unbelievable, the impact in this short amount of time. Orbit came in October. We've been waiting for two years. He is actually comes from Cares Incorporated out of Kansas. He has been trained for over a year before we even met Orbit. Orbit is in the same category with his level of training as any service dog out there. He is also being used as a professional therapy dog for school-wide counseling. I am able to use him with individuals in counseling, with small groups of students in counseling.
He listens and he's really comfortable and soft. Makes me feel calm and supported. It's just comfortable somehow. I can't tell, it's like why.
The students are able to write letters to Orbit. There's a doghouse mailbox outside of my rent. We have noticed that students will say things to Orbit through the mail that they would never have said to their teacher, sometimes their parent. Orbit then writes back to the students every week. He writes to the classroom teacher and Orbit delivers the mail. Orbit has recently started going daily to one of our special education classrooms who have seen miracles happen. We have a student who is basically non-verbal. He was able to put his first three words together ever because of Orbit.
Whenever we're learning about something, he goes around and he sways over on people. Your puppy was, I actually literally kissed him.
He snores very loudly and the students love it. I'll be talking and he'll be like.
You give him a heart or you give him a silent leg?
Because of our Century Families, NEF, was able to give us a grant that supported the cabinet and Dr. Kopp and Mrs. Blevins. Orbit is basically being sponsored by the NIXA Animal Hospital, which has been such a blessing for us. It's like watching a dream come to fruition, being bigger and better than I ever could have ever imagined.
And then I have just another little short one. And this actually, they talked to the school principal.
Prince.
It's fine.
We're looking for financing.
You have a lot of ads on YouTube, don't you?
I was with him when I got the news. Now we have gotten into our dream retailer.
I'm Annie.
I'm Morgan.
And this is our banker, Dennis.
And you're it.
Coverage this morning. An elementary school at NIXA recently hired a new staff member. This one though has more toes and more hair than most.
That's right. Hannah Zell stopped by Century Elementary to meet this special teacher and give us a little background.
Well, guys, Century Elementary recently welcomed a very sweet black lab named Orbit to their staff. But don't worry, he's very qualified for the job.
We just started talking about how amazing it would be to have a therapy or service dog at Century that could be school-wide.
The kids love him more than I ever expected. To be trained as a service dog means that he is completely certified and able to go into public places with myself as the primary handler. It is a blessing that he is able to be here all day, every day with the students. He's trained to do that. He loves working. It means that when he puts his vest on, he knows it is time to work.
They know that he's working. They know we introduced him as our newest staff member at Century and they know that he has a job to do while he's here. But they know that that job is for them. We've taught them that if they want to say hi to him, just they shoot him a little heart and he can feel the love. And so you'll see them do that, but then get right back to their work. And if anything, it's motivated them to work harder.
And the funny thing is, you realize how hard he's working to contain himself when he takes his vest off at night because it is time to run and play. And I barely get his vest off in time and he literally charges up my daughter to start playing with her.
Most, our, most amazing stories was a student who, we have a student who uses a communication device to communicate with one of his teachers. And he kept pointing to the ice cream cone and she said, oh, do you want ice cream? And he shook his head no. And so then he said, his first sentence was, it's for Orbit.
Is beyond my imagination. I am lucky, I am blessed that God chose to use me as a tool to help others.
Now, like Orbit's handler said, when he gets home and the vest comes off, he's a totally different dog, running around and playing. But to ensure Orbit does not lose his training that he's worked so hard for, Russell's complete structure and play with him so he does not forget his training. Back to you.
So this process is very extensive and it's very expensive. So that's kind of why I'm here tonight because I would love to pursue this. But obviously I need the blessing of the school district, you know, to do that. So, and that was one of the first things that Tina told us in the session is, so first of all, go back and meet with your administrator. And so I did that. I came back to Mrs. Vanoy and I'm thinking, like, I gotta make this big pitch. And she's like, I, I'm up for it, like, and so then she's like, well, we gotta talk to Mr. Turgeon. So of course I went to him and again, I'm like, I, I've got all this research and he's like, you don't have, you don't have to sell me. Like, I'm, I'm good with this. I think this is a wonderful thing. So I would not be asking you guys to financially help at all with this. You know, me and my family are willing to, you know, endure that. But I would need your blessings, you know, for the dog to be here and to be able to work here and, because we would have to adopt some kind of board policy. Now I know obviously with this comes concerns too, so, you know, people think about cleanliness, okay? Well, obviously this is a, a certified therapy dog and so what I didn't realize until I went to this training is like, those dogs will not, they will not lick, they will not scratch anything if that vest is on them and they're working. I don't know how they do it, but that's, and obviously this dog would be an inside dog at my home. It would be kept very clean. So that's not an issue. You have to think about allergies. And that was something that a lot of people did ask, you know, Tina about when we did our session with her. She said, you know, you just work with your school nurse and, you know, you find out if there are any students that have, you know, major allergies to dogs and, and you make it work. She's at either school district. She's not had any issues with that. And then obviously, you know, a lot of kids can be scared of dogs. And so that's an issue that has come up, she said. And but again, you just try to separate, if you know you have students that are incredibly afraid of dogs, you keep the dog away. But then also you use that as a modeling, a way of modeling, you know, like showing that this dog is safe and like all of these safe, nice interactions with the dog to hopefully help that student overcome that fear of dogs. You know, there's tons and tons of research on why therapy dogs can be very beneficial, not only for social emotional development, but there's tons of research on even like improved reading scores in students, increased focus. I mean, and the list goes on and on. I had thought, oh, I'll wait late, a little later in my career to propose this, but then I saw this year how many students struggle daily with some form of anxiety or depression or whatever. And, you know, Mrs. Vanoy can kind of chime in here as well, like, we have seventeen students, for instance, right now, that take some kind of daily break with Mr. Ackman on the ride because they can't get through the day without it because of, you know, some, some issue. I have like fourteen students right now that are requiring individual counseling. And a lot of those are dealing with some kind of anxiety or, you know, depression. I've had, I don't know how many groups, you know, that we've done this year. And the list goes on and on. So I thought this, we might as well get going on this because unfortunately, this is a very lengthy process because I'm not just going home and bringing my dog out here. I would go through this Cares Incorporated that you heard Tina refer to. It is based in Kansas. They breed dog, their own dogs, they train their own dogs. They use golden retrievers, black and yellow labs. And it's very expensive because the dogs themselves go through a year-long temperament training to make sure that they're actually, you know, gonna be a good fit for a school. They have to go through all of these, this testing and this training. And they actually use the prison system. The dogs are placed in the prison system for them to get their training. And then I find out, you know, at some point, if I'm a match to a dog, they come actually do like home study to even figure out if I'm a good fit, if our family's a good fit. But then I also then have to go through tons of training. I would be required to go to Kansas then and, you know, meet my new canine friend and be able to show that I can complete the training to be, to be the handler and to help this dog work, you know, to help children. So do you guys have any questions for me or comments or, Mrs. Vanoy, do you have anything you want to add in there or?
No, I was just gonna say, this has been something that like I've kind of talked about a little bit. Shinkle was here before she and I kind of tossed around this idea because we see so many kids who, you know, you make connections. I know as an adult, I go home and the first thing I do is get in my dog's space and, you know, just having that connection with, you know, your, your pet or, you know, a school pet and giving them someone else, like, you know, kind of like they mentioned in that video. Sometimes they won't tell us things, but they'll tell the dog or you'll overhear it from the dog. They'll write it to the dog. And then you can dig into some things. So this is something that Mrs. Miller did bring to me, but it was something that Ms. Shinkle and I were kind of tossing around too because I, I do think there's value to it, you know, and then we started to look into what were some of the things that would need to go along with it. Because it is a, it is a big undertaking, you know, it's not something that would happen overnight or anything like that. But I do think that it would probably not only benefit kids, but also teachers, you know, like.
How long does it take when she commits, I mean, is that like a year or?
The dog itself trains for a year. I would submit an application. They said sometimes it can take up to two years before you actually have your dog in your building.
So they don't already have some in the process of being trained?
Yeah, then, I'm sure they do. I don't know. Like I said, I have not, I didn't even want to start the application process or anything until, you know, I knew that it was going to be okay and I'm sure they're breeding their dogs, you know, that's just a constant cycle would be my guess because they have such a demand. And there aren't very many organizations like Cares that do it, so.
What, what is the price? You said it was very expensive.
Like thousands of dollars. The dog itself and all of that training is probably going to run me six to eight thousand dollars. And then I have to carry special liability insurance, which is, you know, not going to be cheap. And then just the upkeep of the dog, you know, and like, I know like the, it's working, but it's not cheap and just all the things that go along with it. But again, I would not ask you guys to, to bury that, so.
Well, that's very admirable of you to say that, but that's not fair, especially if you're doing something that's beneficial to the children.
Yeah, but it would be like, it'd be my dog. I mean, you know, like, so.
It's your work.
I was thinking if we, you know, did it like, we could, you know, how she talked about how like the NIXA Animal Hospital helps sponsor, which I'm sure that means they're helping to pay for the vest and the leash and, you know, like the food and that kind of stuff. So we could probably find some community businesses that would be.
That was a direction I was going.
That would jump at the opportunity to partner with the school to.
Do what?
I can help you with that.
I'm sure, yeah, so. So, yeah, that's kind of why I'm here, to see if you guys would be okay with, you know, moving forward with this process. Did you have anything you wanted to?
I do because I've seen it in action because when I was at Canton, they had a therapy dog in the elementary and it was unbelievable. Kids that, you know, just would have nothing to do with adults just acted totally different around. And it was just, you know, I call it like a healing power, you know, as for some reason, those animals, you know, if I have my say, I say, let's get a therapy horse too. But, you know. Yes, I'll, I'll adopt it, ride it home every day and we write it back. But I think this is so valuable and, and this could potentially reach students that we're having a hard time reaching. And I think we're missing an opportunity. I wish we would have started this a while back, but it just, it takes someone that's interested, someone that's willing to go through it. And I think we have it now. And I think if you guys, unless you have an opposition to it, I'm inclined to tell her to go ahead and fill out the application and then, you know, if the dog essentially becomes an employee, I think we need to pay for the professional development. So we will discuss that, but I, you know, I'm sensing that. No, it's not an act, I don't have it as an action item, but I will draft a policy and so get a policy passed next month, but.
And I'm sure, you know, I didn't take the time to do it now, but there would be, like, we could easily find, you know, policies from other schools and.
Yeah, I can get a policy.
Yeah, kind of use that as our guide and, but.
Wonderful, you're willing to take it out.
I'm excited, thank you.
I'm just like, you know, I'm like, oh, what if I apply and I don't get approved? Like, I'd be heartbroken.
So. Well, we all know our own dogs, you know, help us, are us, yes. We, we aren't the other things for some of the kids.
No, I think it's a great idea.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move on to programs and services, graduation rates and attendance.
Okay, so graduation rate and attendance, the goals for the district through the strategic plan, the just objective, our goal one, objective seven is the district will maintain increased graduation rate at ninety, ninety-two percent or higher and attendance rate at ninety percent or higher. And if you look at the below with the data, it shows basically every single year we've achieved that status. Every single year. This year, to be continued, obviously, right now, we're tracking about ninety-three percent for attendance. And then our grad rates, I'm assuming will be higher. I mean, obviously, we've got a couple more days to go, but, or one more day to go for the, for the senior. But I think we'll be sitting above that, that mark, so there ain't anything wild happening. So it's been successful. We looked about, we talked about maybe changing those marks to be a bit a little bit more difficult to achieve since we've been consistently there. Bear, just so you know, the attendance is kind of skewed. Our last couple of years with COVID, they did give us some benefit there when we shut down. And then with quarantines, all that, kids were getting full attendance during those. Um, and then with quarantines, all that, kids were getting full attendance during those times, so we had a little bit of a bump this year back to normal baseline, about ninety-three percent. So I'd say we're, that's kind of where we sit usually. Um, actions to be taken to increase. Um, so at the middle school and the elementary, we recognize. Um, students for good attendance, good behaviors, grades, all that good stuff. The high school really doesn't have any sort of um. Celebration that way. We used to before COVID, we kind of got away from that, so just in, in implementing those. Again, um, preferred family healthcare has a mentoring program. We're looking for ways for freshmen, basically, they, they match an adult. At the school with a freshman coming into high school and that, that's gone well. We're looking for ways to strengthen that program, feeling that will increase our, our freshman attendance. And then really returning back to COVID, uh, expectations for attendance, um, in the handbook for the sixth through twelfth grade handbook, we do have uh. Uh, basically your grade can decrease if your attendance goes below a certain mark. Um, we haven't done that the last two years. Desi's guidance was to. Relax from those and we're getting back to implementing those again, so hopefully that'd be another thing to help increase our attendance. Um. Obviously, we'd rather be proactive than, you know, um reactive in that manner, so anything we can do to celebrate kids doing the right thing is uh, going to be our approach, but we can add those things back in. Um, we made several changes throughout several years, grad, especially with graduation, that helped um, increase opportunities for our kids to achieve that, whether traditionally or in a alternate manner. Um, uh, so we increased recovery opportunities, so that would be uh, Mrs. Parrish has worked really hard with that as well as Ms. Carlson this year. Um, we added in Missouri options program. We've had several, I'd say at this point for us, several being three to five students who've completed that program, Missouri options program. Which is basically the high set paired with a couple of classes here, um, and work experience to be able to get their, their high set and then our diploma as well. So they get the high set and they're our student as well, so that's been a successful program. Um, we did add that college and career advisor position and Kelly. Mrs. Carlson doesn't work directly with those kids in that manner, but it does free up Taylor to spend a lot more time individually with kids who are struggling, so that's been a great addition. Um, reestablishing enrichment program, we did that year, this year, um, every freshman took enrichment this year. Freshmen grades are um, doing a good job. Class of kids, probably would have done it without it, but it's been successful. In ten through twelve grades, we've been targeted with kids who struggle in class and try to give them. Teachers in those classes to s- um, to help aid them in passing classes. I think that's been a success and then continue to recognize kids doing the right thing. So all in all, um, we're achieving our goals within our strategic plan. Um, it's going well with attendance and with grad rate and we hope to continue to increase those as we move forward.
Intend a motion to approve the graduation rates attendance.
Seven.
Seven. On favor?
I was just gonna say real quick, every month we approve these. This summer, we're gonna take all these reports because. Every month, a report ties to a goal and objective in our strategic plan, so like when we talk about things that we need to change moving forward. We're gonna take those comments and look at our strategic plan as a committee and talk about, okay, like, do we need to increase the percentage? Because obviously, we want to set our goals to keep improving and then in August, we'll bring the plan back to you guys as a revised. And then the whole cycle starts again every month, so these, these program and services reports. Really important every month so we can know how every program's doing and what they need to improve.
Okay, move on to approval.
Okay. So I have several um, grade level and curriculums to present for approval. Uh, teachers have been busy this year, so we have um. Social studies and science were um, the subjects we were writing this year and I'd like to present kindergarten. Social studies and science, first grade science, second grade, both subjects. Third and fourth grade, both subjects, fifth grade, social studies, sixth grade through eighth grade, middle school, social studies. And then I have high school world history and high school sim. Still have a few teachers who aren't quite complete, so there'll be more to approve over the summer, but the majority are finished and. And then next year, we will be um, working with Step Up Consulting to really audit that curriculum. Um, and put it into play and then be able to share it out on our website. Um, not the full curriculum, but the standards, so parents can at least see the standard, so that's my goal over the next two years to get that. Audit completed and subjects and then be able to share with, with the parents, so. Right, like your approval of that curriculum, any questions?
Not intending a motion for approval of the curriculum.
Some moves.
On favor? Into math curriculum.
Okay, so I'm gonna get their slides ready for them, but um, we started looking at math curriculum in the elementary. Oh, probably a year ago, um, we got a lot of resources, really dove into them and narrowed them down. Um, and then this year, we spent time going to other schools, seeing it in action and then, you know, making some decisions based off of that. So let me get their presentation up there. Sorry, I'm a hand talker, so I can't talk at the same time, so. So the ladies that I have up here in the front, I have Taylor Kason, second grade teacher, Berna Shrag, first grade teacher, Ashley Lambert, fourth grade teacher. Here, I will give you this so that you can.
So we went and um, observed a variety of curriculums. We observed iReady at Palmyra, um, Intu Math at La Plata. Go Math at um, Brashear, I think those were our top three. So we, as a, the elementary decided Intu Math was our. Prime choice. And so we're just gonna go over some of the pros and cons, talk about it a little bit. Um, we really hit on a lot of the pros, so a lot of concerns for teachers are, is that we don't really have enough manipulatives in our current curriculum because it has years past. It comes with a lot of curri- a lot of manipulatives. Um, it comes with two different workbooks for the students. There is a homework book, which La Plata used just for independent work. It didn't send it home. And then a class workbook, which they can do, practice on in class. And this is, these are all pictures we took. So this is a picture of the kindergarten supply closet, so it shows you like how many manipulatives they come with.
I don't know, like the independent work, it didn't seem like any kids had any trouble doing independent work.
It was very engaging.
Yeah, it was very engaging. They were able to do it on their own while the teacher pulled back like small groups and things like that.
Can you define manipulatives?
Oh, yes, sorry, sorry, forget this thing. So manipulative is something that the child like works with to help them, so um, like here we have pattern blocks. Um, oftentimes those little judy clocks, money, like physical money.
It's gonna be ten lots, like a square being a hundred and ones with ten at once and get like the place values and stuff.
Like in fourth grade right now, we have like fraction circles and things like that, but none of them are labeled. So it's really hard for the kids when I'll be like pull one fourth out and they have no idea because it's just the color, so. These were all labeled, so it'd be really easy for the kids to do fractions and things like that with them.
Um, we have focused really a lot on RTI and trying to hit our students who are really close to grade level, but just need a little bit of intervention. And they had a really great small group program that we noticed. Um, this is in one of the, I think, first grade classroom. It is for the teacher, this is the teacher's side and it guides her on what to do to scaffold the child and then that is what the child sees when they work. So this is nice because currently we use iReady data and we kind of create our own lesson while this already has the lesson. And then it also has prompts, so like if a child, if you say, what's two plus two, and they say five, it has like. Examples of if the child said this, respond with this. They said this, respond with this. And not only does it do remediation, but it also does, um, it challenges them also.
Um, so at each grade level, they have a video that's engaging, so this was actually in kindergarten. So it goes with each grade level. They had one for fractions, but I think they already watched it by the time we got in there because we were trying to get around to every grade level. But this was kindergarten and I think they were working on adding that day, so it's just a fun little engaging video and it usually lasts like three to five minutes. So it's just kind of um, extra practice when they're going into independent work and things like that.
So here are some more examples of um, stuff that it comes with. It comes with this differentiated instruction master's book that you can make copies of. It has a book full of rubrics that is standard-based and then there are small group instruction activities and then the actual curriculum. This is nice because K two, this was something we were impressed with because K two is standard-based. Um, and sometimes you have a hard time of defining what does that mean, so there's not a letter grade, it's more of your child is showing. Growth or developing or there's limited progress. So it kind of breaks it down at what level, so two, developing, what that should look like, what the child can do. One, what they can do and then if they're zero.
And this um, is an assessment book, so you can see what you're practicing, what standards and then. It actually, well, this is like a practice type of questions. So like, for instance, when we do, like in first grade, we do cahoots for math review. With a lot of the same terminology and that helps like with the test, like, oh, I've seen this before, I know what it means, so now I can practice doing the question. And this has where you can see the um, familiar materi- materials of what they would see on the test.
Yeah, and I like how Taylor said, um, they have, you can reach every student because there's different levels all throughout the book, so you can reach your high students, your low students and your middle students. So it has pages for each of that.
There are digital checks for each lesson. Um, you can either do these independently or whole group. We didn't see this as much, La Plata didn't utilize it probably as much as we were able to, as much as we would like to see. This is the pacing guide, so this will be really nice with time to write curriculum. It kind of tells you scope and sequence of what you're gonna learn throughout the year. It's also really nice because it tells you what the student learned in the previous year, so when they come into second grade, I know what they taught in first grade and what skills I should be building on. It also comes with posters that the students can make themselves and then you can also hang up matching ones. There's lesson planning templates online that you can print out if you don't want to use the ones in the book and they have lots of planning and pacing tips online. They did have professional development that seemed to be updating quite often, which is nice because sometimes when you get a curriculum, there's professional development. And you do it and then they don't really update it very often.
Very pros for Intu Math, that you can also print, print parent instructions for lessons, which is really good. So there's like, well, we're learning, like we learned this a different way and now they're doing it at us for your school, so you can have that same like terminology and help your kid at home. A lot of games and projects with the curriculum and in first grade, we played a lot of games and in second grade and they love that. Um, it has learning cards, exit tickets, which are always good, and then the on your own work during the lesson and the test prep.
These are just miscellaneous pictures. I'm probably not gonna focus on them too much. Kind of a little blurry. Um, so this is just reiterating the two books. They have the lesson book, which is in color. This is the whole group one. This would be their homework book. It's in black and white. Uh, cons, because you have to see both sides. There, we didn't, they have a online program that goes along with it. We didn't get to see that because they don't utilize it. It's called WAGL. So we'd have to research more into that. Um, it's a progress monitoring program, which we currently use iReady to do that. And then another con is there's not as much storage in all the classrooms, so that could be a challenge, but it's a good challenge for us to have. So just some takeaways that we were really impressed with and that kind of persuaded all the other teachers. The manipulatives are really important for us. The interactive videos to keep the kids engaged, especially after COVID, a lot of them rely on technology to become engaged. Um, it comes with lots of test prep and differentiated materials. There's stuff for not only whole group, but our RTI program, lots of online resources. And parent instructions.
And the website that the teachers will have is very user-friendly, like everything is laid out right there for them, so it's very nice. We got to see the first grade one and she let us have her laptop and we just kind of went through everything, but it was super easy to follow every step on how to get to the lessons.
Any questions?
Do you know how the, the students are testing and using this?
It is on paper.
Yeah.
So it's very similar to what we have now. So do you mean like after a unit?
No, how well they're tested.
Oh, how well. Um, we do not, but one of my questions was, I asked second grade because when we were observing, a lot of curriculums. Had students in third grade or second grade adding within one hun- like three-digit numbers, which we do not do. And I asked them if they felt that the students did well transitioning to a new curriculum, which they said they did and that the kids had really responded well. Based on the lessons we saw, they seemed to be able to keep up with the lesson and understand. They were speeding through the curriculum. They were doing like two lessons every few days, so, because they were behind.
But this kid seemed to respond pretty well to it. They were on it and I sat down with like a small group in first grade and they knew exactly what to do. And we're explaining all the steps on how to do things, so it was really neat to see.
And then we did see, I think, fourth, fourth grade or third grade, we saw their tests, study guide. And they seemed, they went over the study guide and they seemed to be doing, doing really well with the study guide.
Is our current curriculum, is it all online or on iPad or does it have book?
It has books. It has consumables. It does also have the online portion, it's just not as interactive.
We're using iReady across the board as much as possible, I mean, to track like year in, year out.
And WAGL isn't what they, what curriculum companies call like an polycart. I am, so you don't have to take it. So I've already kind of talked with them a little bit about that because she sent me, I've got different quotes over here as far as pricing. Um, and so we talked about that a little bit, that we already use iReady as our um. I guess progress monitoring tool, diagnostic tool, um, to show what our students do. Um, I think. Of course, WAGL, Intu Math is gonna push WAGL, you know, they're gonna say, well, this will tell you what they can or can't do in this lesson, but. The digital checks are different than WAGL and I think the digital checks will be much more, so Ms. Kason had mentioned that just a little bit about how you could do like an end of. End of day or end of lesson check quickly to know like, hey, they got it or they didn't get it, I need to reteach that. iReady doesn't do that. Um, iReady is more path-based as far as, so if I score grade three and I'm in grade four, it's building my skills so that I can get up to grade level. It's got my independent path. That's not, that's not necessarily what this is, what WAGL is.
La Plata also does not have WAGL and they didn't seem to be affected by it.
Would there be, I guess, would the, the two iReady monitor, track things that align with? The, I'm, I'm assuming the curriculum's probably um. Pretty general, I mean, even though it's this company versus that company, the, the principles, what you're trying to teach are the same.
Yeah, your standards.
So it'll track similarly in iReady?
The other thing I'll say is with S R three money, twenty percent of that we have to use for learning loss. And one of the big things that the state has pushed is on curriculum, so remember we got C K L A, the, the curriculum for. Um, elementary last year and then we expanded that to the middle school. Before we can get approved, it has to be vetted by the state. And the state has done their research to see what curriculum works well for students, so when you ask how do students perform? This curriculum has been vetted.
This one is all, so they use Ed Reports um, to, to kind of rate those things and so this has all green ratings in the three competencies that they evaluated in. Um, for K three, it's actually a K eight program, but for K five, like it's, everything is green, but it. Yeah, I'm trying to think of what the three, off the top of my head, I'm sorry, what those three categories are, but it is. You know, within like, they scored like a seventeen out of eighteen or thirty, thirty-four out of thirty-four in those varying categories, so it is. Um, the top three choices that we looked at were all green in Ed Reports. Um, we really didn't look at anything that wasn't. Um, I think we maybe had two in the beginning that weren't and we quickly booted those out, you know, we've got to looking at them and we're like, we get why they're not green. Um, but this, yeah, the top three that we had were all green.
All for boosting the test scores.
Yeah.
And math is just extremely important, so.
The total amount?
Yeah, so, um, so for a five-year, five-year plan with Intu Math, and this one currently um, has WAGL in it. What she proposed to me is fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. That's with um, students having consumable materials and digital materials, which is what we do right now with um, everyday math. They all have an online login and that's with teachers also having their consumable materials and the digital access as well. Um, and then that would be. Um, and then that would be, they offer two types of manipulative packages, that they call it like, uh, the basic and the premium, so this one is the premium, meaning that they would get every manipulative that they would need. The basic is you get the most standard ones that will cover the majority of things, so.
Ed Reports focuses, they rate them on their focus and coherence, rigor and mass practice, and then the usability, so. And they are agreeing with lots of fourteen out of fourteen scores for this program, so.
So back to the S R three, we have, and, and this, this category is hard to spend the money. And so C K L A with the training was around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, for the five-year plan. And so that's why I told her, I says, we might as well do the premium, so, because we've got about four hundred thousand to spend. Yes, get, get everything, every tool in their hands that we can get, so if that's.
This does include professional development also. So it's got, like, um, there's professional development for Waggle, but then there's, again, if we nix that, then this will change. Um, but then there's also just professional development for the program and getting into the program, and so that's already factored into this expense as well. So Waggle in itself, just kind of give you an idea, Waggle is roughly fifteen thousand dollars, so that will change your, your price as well.
And the price you use included all that, right?
Yes, yeah, so fifty-seven thousand for all the bells and whistles.
With the exception of Waggle. So whatever, that, that'll bring it down, but.
I'm gonna talk with them a little, with the company a little bit more, of course, they're gonna try to sell Waggle, but I wanna really dig into it. Um, and I think we may even have a demo account, so if I can get in there and kind of play on the, the demo account and see if it's really something that we need, or if it's doing the same thing as iReady, then we don't need it, so. Um, but I think it needs a little more, um, experimentation before I say, hey, we don't need that, but I.
I mean, if iReady were clear with it, we know that we've got, you know, what that looks like coming up through.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm like. Yeah, and that's, I, I think that Waggle and iReady will do similar things, so if they do, there's no need for Waggle. But if it does something different that more so aligns with it, then we may need to keep it, but I just wanna get in there and play with it a little bit and see and talk with the rep a little bit more, because I did, when she presented these to me, I said, can I nix Waggle if I don't want it? And she said, yes, so I did already ask that, knowing that we already have something in place, but just wanna make sure that they don't do the same thing, so.
So your motion is to include Waggle?
To, no, to imp- to purchase the Intu Math, the, the premium version, but for now, without the Waggle. So basically, purchase the curriculum as presented.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Career ladder plan. You girls are welcome to stay if you'd like.
All right, um, through COVID, funds were available through the state of Missouri to participate in. Um, career ladder, it's something they've done in the past, they funded sixty percent, forty percent, so the state would cover sixty percent. Local dollars cover, um, the rest, uh, support percent, they, they took that away. Um, so it's something that in the past, people have experienced with COVID, um, trying to help with teacher shortage and, uh, boost pay. They added the program back in, I believe, last year. Uh, we didn't opt to do it last year, um, just trying to fill out the program and see if it's something they will sustain throughout time. Not, basically not wanting to offer, uh, money to teachers and then taking it away. I mean, I, I think we're all in here committed to increasing the base salary as much as we can, so we wanna make sure we can support that as well. But, um, now that a year into it, we've looked at it, and I'm gonna share some information, kind of the ins and outs of what it'll look like here. Um, and then obviously, uh, get your thoughts on it. All right, so career, the purpose and responsibilities, so the purpose of the career ladder is enhance the educational experience of students by recognizing more productive, effective educators. So basically, teachers are working very hard, um, beyond, um, school hours, ensure that students are taken care of. We have teachers that, um, tutor in the morning, that tutor after school, they're, they're really doing anything they can to support our students, and that's grades pre-K through, through twelve. So, um, basically, this program would allow them to track those hours and to be paid for them. Um, and you can get, the, the bottom part, I won't read it verbatim, but it's outlined, the, it'll align to basically what we have outlined in our Knox County R one school improvement plan, the curriculum development plan, professional development plan, and the Missouri school improvement plan. So those, those pieces are what we wanted to have our student, our teachers really focus in on when they make their plan to be able to do career ladder. There's three stages to career ladder, um, so this is different than what it is for the pace for salary schedule. So basically, a teacher comes in at step one, that's where they start, and then as they move up there, a year ahead, basically, if they're experienced, career ladder is different. After you complete that, those years of experience, then that's where you start. So you have to, for this, to be able to access the dollars for stage one, you've had to complete two years of teaching. So when you start your third year, you can start stage one, and that amount is fifteen hundred dollars for fifty hours of, of work, of tutoring, wherever it might be. And then stage two, that is three, completed three years of, of work, so you're starting your fourth of, uh, teaching experience. And after, you get three thousand dollars off of seventy-five hours of, of logged hours. And then stage three, there's a jump there in years, after you complete five years, so in year six, you get five thousand dollars after a hundred years, or a hundred years. Hundred hours. You want that five thousand dollars, you better commit to it. All right, so there's a couple stipulations paired with that, you'll, I won't read this, um, completely off the screen, they're pretty similar between, um, each one of the three stages. But basically, the only difference is the years of experience they have and the hours expected of them as, as they go along. Um, so you have, like I said, you have to have two years of, of teaching experience in Missouri public schools. You have to have the completed, the beginning teacher assistance program, um, good evaluations throughout your time as a teacher at Knox County. Um, you have to have at least a full, you have to be a full-time teacher or, or beyond, so some of our teachers have additional contract days, and they would be eligible. Um, appropriate certification subject area for t- each teacher, so that's something, as we look through, we have teachers working on certification, this would be another, um, maybe benefit to them working on that certification a little faster, they might, they'd have access to those dollars. And then really, it goes through, um, the hours that they would have to clock in, so for step one or stage one, that'd be fifty hours.
What, what is, what do you mean by volunteer efforts?
So they call them volunteer hours, uh, basically, they would log their volunteer hours, um, on a sheet, and I don't have it on this, it's in the, in the handbook. But they would track those hours, they call them volunteer hours, and they would get paid for those volunteer hours.
So once you get to like, say, step one, and you've had fifty hours, you have to achieve those fifty hours before you're eligible for the extra money?
Correct, it would be like stipend, that, like coaching.
And then the same thing would, so the next year, they didn't do it, they wouldn't get, it, it's a per, per year, per hour type.
It's an appropriation, so basically, within the budget, if the state of Missouri says we're not gonna do it, then we'd have to have a discussion about it, if something we maintain.
And the, the dollar amount you showed, is that the total, or is that what they provide?
That's the total.
So we provide sixty, or forty percent of that?
Correct.
So like, I've been taking my old, uh, McKenna to meet with Mrs. Delaney in the morning, you know, at seven o'clock, so that would count. That hour or whatever of a morning would count towards this.
Yep, they would have to put a plan together, and there's several teachers, Mrs. Delaney being one of them, who has put a lot of hour, right, a lot of hours in, yep.
Would that even count, like, um, my son is gonna do tutoring with Mr. Delaney this summer, math, does that count? Like, if it's during the summer, or is it just during, like, that's school?
There is a committee that we would form, and basically, they put their plans in, and then when that's, um, complete or approved, then we would go from there. So if she put that on, I'm sure that would be something they'd look at.
She'll probably exhaust her hours before you get to the summer.
So educator two and educator three, like I said, the only difference here are the hours, um, the expected of those teachers as they go along. Common question I get at, or gotten asked, what if you're on stage three and you only hit fifty hours? Well, within that plan, it says you would just go down to that level and, and be, um, be paid at that spot. Um, activities allowed, here are some examples, um, externships were a big piece, um, they're, the state of Missouri is big on externships right now, um, serving as a coach, supervisor, organizer of any extracurricular activities. Um, and this is towards student, uh, achievement, so I'm thinking math club that we have, um, where they, and I think the stipend for that's five hundred dollars. And Mrs. Delaney spent three weekends with Hadley, driving her back and forth for, to Columbia or Kirk's River, maybe, so I think, um, that would obviously fit in there. We have sort of science clubs, we have foreign language clubs that do a lot of work that, I mean, the stipends don't really match what they're actually doing. Um, mentoring, we have a mentoring program that we hit on earlier during our programs evaluation of attendance and graduation, that'd be another area we could really dig into um, for both students, and then I think for t- uh, teachers as well. Um, tutoring, which is one of the biggest pieces, and we'll get to the financial part of it at the end, but there's costs already within our budget that we're using um, to pay for tutoring, elementary tutors, high, middle school tutors. Um, the, some of that would come back to us because we are, we'd get reimbursed from that through the state, so maybe, um, twenty thousand dollars or whatever it might be that we spend, we'd get a portion of that back because we're, they're paying for our portion of that as well, and I'll get down to that at the end. Um, ACT prep, SAT prep, and other areas, and then additional coursework, professional developments. We have the Vanguard team, for instance, that works with Becky Barnhill throughout the summers, sometimes in three to five days, that they just come in and do it on their own. And that'd be something where they could potentially be, uh, compensated for. Disallowed activities, uh, I think this is one, is, they were sure to say this list is not at all inclusive, but painting classrooms, doing work on your classroom. Basically, any activity that doesn't involve students is not gonna pass, um, and, um.
What if you ask a student to come in and paint your class?
Supervise student painting your class.
Understood, understood.
A lot of that, oh, and any activity that you're being paid during school day, so if you're working today, you couldn't use your, um, career ladder hours for that. And then anything, I think, the bottom, tutoring cannot include open gym, study hall detention or activity for which a teacher receives stipend for. So if you're talking about, or like coaches, for instance, they kind of do that stuff on their own anyways, and they, they have stipends, so that would be hard for them. I A P meetings are on there as well, which I think is odd, but. Yep, it is.
And, and if there's a lot of teachers that jump on board with this, they could go with it, there's enough opportunity, right, that everybody can get their hours, there would be no question there, right?
And I've never done it before, the question I have are phys, or P E teachers, I don't know how they would necessarily fit into this, and.
But they could do the mentoring side, right?
They could do that, but like I was explaining to him, when we had it at Canton, some of the coaches put on their tutoring, some of their athletes. Like, if they found out they were struggling in a certain class, then they would work with those kids after, so if they have opportunities, if they want to.
I wanna make sure there would be, because if there's several teachers on, yeah, but.
What about the coaches? I think some of the coaches go out and help the other coaches, when it's not even their, they don't have to be there. I mean, they just, they go that extra mile, I mean, I'm well impressed, how they pull together.
I don't know, athletics wise, I'm not completely sure if that would be within that plan or not. Um, so.
In fact, that if you do well in athletic, athletic, you do certain things.
You have to do better in academics.
So the state of Missouri would pay sixty percent of the, all of the expenditures, and K C R one covers forty percent. If every teacher were to take advantage of the program, the state of Missouri would cover around one hundred thousand, and K C R would cover around seventy thousand. I mean, those are high numbers, but so basically, the entire program would cost around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, and they would, it's sixty forty matched there, I would, there are some things that would come, reduce that number, like we're already paying teachers, let's say, ten to fifteen tutoring dollars, and there's things there, so it kind of reduces it down, would say it gets down to sixty or fifty thousand. I don't have those numbers exactly, but it would be, um, lower than that amount, and that's if everybody did all their hours, um, here.
What do you, how many do you anticipate would take advantage?
I would assume the major, a majority of them, just like elementary, I know most of them tutor every day throughout the time, so those hours would already count. So they, I think that's around thirty, forty hours right there that they would have, um, already, already ready for them. They'd have to come up depending on how many years of experience they have for appro, for, uh, plan the rest of the way.
And this would be contingent on whether the funding is not there to the state of Missouri, I mean, our obligation, would that, would that be how it would be worded or? I mean, if this funding from the state goes way over seventy, what, what would we look like?
So what a lot of schools did the last time is, it was worded exactly like that, like, we'll continue to do the school portion, the forty percent. Um, if the state comes out, and at that time, then the board should decide, no, let's give them the full amount. Um, but I think, you know, that's part of the program is making them understand.
No matter what, right?
Yeah, yeah, making them understand when they sign up for this, that, you know, sixty percent of this is coming from the state. Hopefully, they keep funding that, but if they don't, you know, um, we'll, we'll still fund your forty percent.
Right, I think that would be the fair way to do it, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming this would be a, a year-to-year type vote for a program, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm assuming.
Well, it would be like every year, you'll approve this as a handbook.
Right, as a, as a policy, yeah, yeah.
So what we have, right, what's on the website, um, that you have access to is the handbook, and it's, um, just created, I'd say, within the last month or so, um, it'll just approve through the states, and then we have to make sure that we have everything iRayroll here. But we will, um, update it with people who wanna be on the committee, basically, and get that, and we'd have to update it again, approve it again, basically, in July to have all those people in the right spots.
And as of right now, I mean, um, our state has a lot of surplus of money, and they're really focused on teacher retention, teacher recruitment. So they're trying to set up some plans for some long-term plans on increasing teacher pay and funding mechanisms like this that also encourage teachers to stay in the profession. Obviously, you gotta be in it so many years to get to this level, and, um, so, uh, I, I don't see it going anywhere anytime soon. Um, but like, you never know.
We need to vote for this?
Yes, this is an action right to.
Contain a motion to approve the career ladder plan. On favor? Summer facilities and grounds.
Yeah, it's that time of year, I'd just like to give you guys an update of some things that we're gonna, you know, be working on this summer since school's gonna be out here this week. Um, usual cleaning, painting, uh, maintenance does a great job getting the rooms empty and cleaning the floors, um, waxing the floors and painting a lot of rooms. Um, this year may be a little bit different because we're gonna do the plaster repair, so, um, those guys are gonna paint the rooms. But it's, you know, it's gonna just move our schedule back a little bit, forgetting the high school, um, wing classrooms done. Track resurfaced, remember, you guys approved that, um, so they're supposed to do that in June, is that correct? So that'll be done. Um, and we're gonna, this summer, focus on reorganizing the bus barn, just get it ready for, um, building a, um, break room in there. So, um, because there is just stuff piled everywhere, um, so I've already told Gary, we're pulling up a dumpster. And if it's been sitting there for a while, it's going in the dumpster, so. Um, and then, um, Compass Electric's gonna be in start, installing our four new electric chargers for the four new buses that are coming. Um, and then, um, R E C has had this new transformer for us for a long time. Um, and then, um, R E C has had this new transformer for us for a long time. Right now, outside of the ag classroom, there's a brick wall that comes out, it's got a roof. That's our electrical room, and it has these four really old transformers. They're about this tall, that big around, in the middle, it's, they look horrible. And, um, they're probably not gonna last very long. Well, R E C's had this transformer, um, for two years now, saying, let us know when it'd be a good time. And then we're talking about, let's look at some projects, and then gymnasium got brought up, maybe. They're like, wait a minute, we're not gonna put it there, and then you guys tell us to move it if you're, so, um, so I, they, they're like, we need to get this done. So they're gonna come in and do that this summer, um, but that's gonna shut the power off for two weeks. Um, so, um, it's gonna take some coordination and some planning, but I'm just letting you guys know, it's gonna be a, a two, it, it's probably gonna be less than that, but they're saying let's just say two weeks for now. So right now, we're coordinating with everybody now. Obviously, elementary's on a different transformer, so elementary will not be affected by that. It will only be the high school and the middle school. So, um, so we will coordinate efforts to, thankfully in July is when they're doing it. And so summer school's over, so it's not gonna impact anything with preparing food or anything like that. We've just gotta find a place, um, and make sure that Marcia can get her work done, so employees can get paid, that's number one priority. Um, but just letting you guys know, when I know some dates, I'll let you know so that, um, everybody's aware of it. We do have generators, the good thing about July is those coolers and freezers are usually pretty empty. So if we can find somewhere to put them and not have to mess with the generator every day, then we're gonna do that, so.
What about, as somebody talked about, university finance, we haven't done it ahead of football season speakers for football field. What's that, what do we need to do on that? You don't need our approval for that, do you?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't even know what's the quote, how much?
Oh, it was twenty-seven thousand, I believe.
Yeah, so it'll take board approval if, if that's what we wanna do, so.
I'd have to update that, I think it went out at the sixty days, whatever, so that was accurate, but we can.
That's something we can maybe get on next month, just so, give us a chance to maybe get that ahead of.
Yeah.
Talking about it again too late.
Yeah. For the six percent of year.
I could probably just talk to you later.
Yeah, so, so anything that's over fifteen thousand has to have board approval, so.
Makes sense.
And that's all I have.
Contain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
No.
That's your idea.
I'm trying. It's not fine.
Here, just take mine.
Thank you, it's not worn out.
She, I'm just reading the doc.
Okay, um, during the regular session, I move to adjourn the regular session to, um, meeting to go into closed session for the purposes of considering the following. Student matters under section sixteen dot zero two one subsection six of fourteen. Personal matters under section sixteen dot zero two one subsection three and thirteen.
Second.
Mrs. Hagerly?
Yes.
Mrs. Bue?
Yes.
Mrs. Jansen?
Yes.
Mrs. Devlin?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Peeblin?
Yes.
Officer Carries, six and zero.